It looks like we were all here. Ray is also here off video. Let the record reflect that we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Want to take a moment before we start the regular part of the meeting to recognize a few Madison residents who we've lost over the past few weeks. Adelaide Arleno, longtime Madison resident, died after short illness on the October 24th. Was ninety, born in Naples, Italy, in November 22nd, 1930, and emigrated to the United States in 1968, settled in Madison with her beloved husband Mario and their young family. Adelaide and Mario worked tirelessly to provide a wonderful life for their children. She was an excellent mother, incredible cook, loved to be surrounded by her family. Adelaide was predeceased by her beloved husband of sixty-three years and also predeceased by her son-in-law Dominic Kiko. He was survived by six children, Joanne, Maurizio, Antoinette, Desi, Sammy, and Anna, her fourteen grandchildren, and one great-grandson. Leaves two sisters back in Italy. Michael Caulfield, longtime Madison resident, died on October 22nd after short illness at the age of seventy-four. Born in Pittsfield, Massachusetts, December 28th, 1946. He was raised in Dalton, Massachusetts with his two sisters. He met his wife Helen during high school in Dalton, and the couple were married on August 24th, 1968. He earned his bachelor's degree from Paulby, and after teaching a year of high school math, volunteered and served in the United States Army as a first lieutenant prior to his honorable discharge. Michael and Helen welcomed two sons of the family, Michael and Luke, and they would raise them here in Madison, a home they called, a place they called home for thirty years. After his strong, his career prudential endurance, he retired in 2000 executive vice president. He then became a dedicated volunteer, strongly believed giving back to community, this community in Madison. In his retirement, he generously devoted a great deal of time to the Madison area YMCA, serving on the board of directors, including a term as board chair, which included the kickoff of the Capitol campaign, which led to the latest expansion. He was survived by his wife fifty, fifty-three years Helen and her two sons, Michael and Luke, along with her spouses and two grandchildren. Fran Elias, lifelong Madison resident, passed away in October 16th, 2021, in her home on North Street. She was ninety-five, born in Madison, February 26th, 1926. She spent the majority of her life at Twenty-One North Street. She loved Madison and this family home. Her husband Steve Elias Senior, predeceased in 2004, after more than forty-five years of marriage, and her daughter Anne Elias, predeceased in 2010. She was survived by three daughters, Diane, Madeline, and Stephanie, and one son Stephen, and nine grandchildren. She was a lifelong parishioner at St. Vincent Martyr, graduated from Madison High School, and worked for a secretary for the Madison Board of Education before marrying her husband in 1958. John Benel, known as the music man of Madison, died on October 15th. He was ninety-four, Mr. B., as he was known, was a music mentor known by his students and colleagues. He was a supervisor of music for the Madison Public Schools until his retirement in 1990. Lives of thousands will continue to play and love the music he shared with him during his forty years of teaching and conducting concerts and putting on musicals at high school. Twenty sixteen, the high school auditorium was renamed the John Benel Auditorium in his honor. He was also the choir director of the first Presbyterian church in Springfield for forty-three years and directed three popular music organizations, Union County Band and the Orpheus Glee Club, and the Madison Community Band for thirty-one years. Native of New Providence, he was a World War II veteran, served in the Merchant Marines, and in 1945, in the first U.S. Army Band from nineteen forty-six to forty-eight. Museum of Early Trades and Crafts in Madison honored Mr. Benel's freshman year in 2005. He leaves behind his wife of almost seventy-one years, Virginia, his children Jane, David, Margaret, five grandchildren, four great-grandchildren. And on October seventeenth, Dean Colbert passed away peacefully at home with her family by her side, eighty-nine years old, a Madison resident for over half a century. Married for fifty-three years to Frances Colbert, passed away in 2019. She leaves her children Michael and Kathleen and three grandchildren. He learned his BA in early childhood education from Fordham and Masters in Education from Hunter, and her love of children led her to become a teacher in New York City public school system for over twelve years, taught in the South Bronx, a much different time. Was parishioner at St. Vincent Martyr since moving to Madison in 1970. Let us take a moment to remember Adelaide Arleno, Michael Caulfield, Fran Elias, John Benel, and Gene Colbert. Now let us pass our spot on to the families and friends that they leave behind. Thank you. All right, we're gonna, minutes for approval will hold off the next meeting. There was a mix-up on minutes that were distributed, so we will approve the October thirteenth minutes at the next one. So, welcome all. It could be back in my seat here. Thank you to Austria for leading the last meeting. So I spent a, some time with the forum of the eleven Conley siblings. So, great to be able to get away. I know we've already, at the last meeting, heard extensive reports on our great Bottom Hill Day, but I do want to get my sense in, it was an incredible day. Thank you to all who attended. We've supported our musicians and vendors and the army of staff and volunteers that made it such a beautiful day. It was incredible. And at this time, we were planning to return through in-person meetings, and you heard me say that back in the summertime also. So, we will see us when you see us in person, but right now, we're hoping to be back here in person on November eighth. And as our September return was pushed back due to the Delta variant, and while virtual meetings have been extremely effective, in fact, our attendance has been higher than normal in-person ones. We know the expectation was to be back in in-person meetings as soon as COVID numbers would allow it. And right now, we are trending in that right direction. So borrowing another setback, we are there. More details we posted on RoseNet, but here are a few items to keep in mind. Meetings will be televised instead of being covered by Zoom, it will be YouTube Live. Zoom will only be used for out-of-town, out-of-town staff and elected officials to attend virtually. The committees and boards may remain virtual through 2021 unless there's an actual need for them to meet in person. In twenty twenty, excuse me, in 2022, they may continue virtually if permitted by the state, and if that makes it easier for them to meet. And since YouTube Live will be a one-way feed, the only method for public comment will be by attending in person or sending correspondence to the clerk, and correspondence will be acknowledged as to the sender and subject, but will not be read verbatim. And again, the full, full details will be put on RoseNet, and please double-check before our next meeting, just in case things change. Other things going on, last Wednesday, I attended the retirement and birthday celebration for Corporal Kevin Dunn. Kevin served as Madison police officer for thirty-seven years, an incredible run of service for our community. And to put this in perspective, he was given the oath to be an officer by Mayor Betty Pungartner. We will miss Kevin, that special Kevin Boone smile, but I'm sure, as I've seen him around, since he actually finished working, I've seen him at many events in towns, I'm sure we will all see him here. And it's past Thursday, I attended and shared a welcoming greeting to the, at the inauguration of Dr. Gary Crosby of St. Elizabeth University's eighth president, first male and first African-American to hold that position. He had already reached out to me and visited Hartley Dodge while, and while St. Ease is in Morris Township, they are very much a part of our community, so I look forward to working with Dr. Crosby as we strengthen our town and ground relations. And lastly, I took advantage of early voting this earlier today, and you probably can't read it, but there's my little "I voted" sticker. I wanted to see how it worked out, and it actually happened to be closer to my home than my actual polling place, so that would seem even better, but there are many places throughout the county where you can vote early, and we are lucky enough to have one right here in Madison. So if you're looking like your election day, Tuesday, the second, might be a little too busy for you, you know, get it out of the way. Early voting continues through Sunday, the thirty-first. And as Governor Murphy said, it was easy-peasy, so I was in and out of there very quickly. And that is it. Good to be back. And now, reports from committees, public safety, Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night around six twenty-five, the fire department, along with other departments and agencies, responded to assist the Chatham Township Fire Department at a residential structure fire. Madison fire artists were assigned as the Rapid Intervention Crew, or RIC team, which is required in all structured fires. This was a three-alarm fire. The month of October is when Fire Prevention Week occurs. Over the past couple of weeks, the fire department has visited and interacted with approximately twenty-four hundred children, PK through eighth grade. Age-appropriate fire safety programs are presented to the children at each school. And the police department. Corporal Stephanie Alquino and SRO Tom Downs were both awarded Madison Employees of the Month for September 2021 for their planning and management of a very successful 2021 National Night Out that was held in August 2021. Congratulations to both of them. On October 30th, as the mayor has said, the Madison Police Department celebrated the retirement of Corporal Kevin Boone after thirty-seven years of service, along with his birthday. Corporal Boone was celebrated with attendance from former and current Madison police officers, members of the borough government and administration, and family and friends. We wish Corporal Boone a long and healthy retirement after his highly decorated service to Madison of our residents. And finally, this morning, on October 25th, the Madison Police Department investigated approximately ten motor vehicle burglaries in the neighborhoods of Wayne Boulevard and Rosemont Avenue, which occurred overnight. The vehicles entered were all unlocked motor vehicles. I want to remind residents that it is imperative to secure your vehicles and remove all valuables from your cars. These incidents are not unique to Madison, and car burglaries are at a near all-time high in New Jersey. The police department is routinely on patrol in residential areas throughout their shifts to combat these incidents. Please help deter thieves by locking your car. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and now Finance Clerk, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we had a good week last week for grants. From Green Acres Department of Environmental Protection, we received five hundred thousand dollars to go towards the debt of the purchase of land at the MRC. For the Masonic Lodge, the New Jersey Historic Trust gave them four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And for the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, New Jersey Historic Trust gave them three hundred thousand. All good news for the borough. And meanwhile, taxes are due November first. That's it.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. The, on the plaza, the electrical conduit installation, bollard foundations, paver resets have been advanced, and they started granite stair tread resets. Curb and sidewalk contracts will continue through next spring based on contractor availability and the long list of requests. The culvert cleaning emergency response at state rail properties has advanced. The rail portion of the cleaning work could be completed this week. For the Department of Public Works, DPW has just completed the installation of thirty-three new benches, thirty-three new benches in the downtown commercial district. Leaf pickup started today, October 25th. Residents are encouraged to bag their leaves or place them in cans for pickup at by the yard waste contractor once a week. Free disposable leaf bags are available at the DPW building on John Avenue at the Borough and at the Borough Hall in the clerk's office. The Mechanical Division purchased new welding equipment to have the capacity to repair vehicles in-house with aluminum alloy components. In preparation for the winter weather, both rock salt domes have been topped off and winterized all sprinkler systems and water fountains, and will be removing the barricades on certain streets for outside dining before the first snowfall. First snowfall. In consultation with the shade tree advisory board, DPW will be pruning and removing parts of the tree canopy at Niles Park. The annual tree planting program has been completed. Fourteen trees were planted. For the Sustainable Madison, Sustainable Madison, New Jersey, Sustainable New Jersey notified us that the Madison has been approved certification at the Silver Letter level with eight hundred and fifty points, which is great news. For the shade tree management, in a special, I did not read this last time, so I'm giving you the report now. In a special fall project, DPW is in the process of planting fourteen new street trees, all requested by residents. In an early analysis of the two hundred, two thousand twenty-one tree removal permits, it is apparent that most of the trees being removed are dead, dying, or structurally unsound. The current tree protection ordinance allows for these removals without requiring replacement trees. The results are a loss of many trees without repopulating Madison tree canopy. The board, the Shade Tree Management Board, will consider an ordinance, changes that require replacement of some of these lost trees. The Borough Arborists completed a survey of Summerhill Park. Results will be reviewed at the next STMB meeting. Shade Tree Management Board is working with the Friends of Madison Shade Trees and the Parks Advisory Committee on a small tree grove planting in memory of Judy Mullins and Memorial Park. I personally completed the New Jersey Forest Services Corps training and aced all components. I was told to read this, I'm sorry. I was told to read it, and aced all of the online quizzes, so that's, that's good. Don't ask me any questions about trees because I don't know the answers. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and congratulations. And Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. We have too many things up. Just a reminder that the Madison Farmers Market is still open at Dodge Field from one to six every Thursday through November eighteenth, and will begin featuring live music every week from four to six. The Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps will be holding their annual trunk-or-treat and pumpkin illumination on Friday, October 29th. Information can be found on the Isle of Madison, New Jersey Facebook page. The event starts at five. The Gateway and Wayfinding Project is continuing, and concept plans have been submitted by Marge to the Steering Committee. Planning for the holiday season events has begun. The Chamber of Commerce has their Halloween Parade and Magic Show beginning at twelve-thirty in front of Hartley Dodge Memorial Building with the parade, and then having the magic show on the corner of Lincoln Place and Waverly Place, and then trick-or-treating in town until three. Fall performance schedule at the Madison Community Arts Center is underway. Information about performances can be found on the MACO website. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, and Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, one sec. The Electric Department reports that on Saturday, October 16th, the standby crew was called out for a no-power call on Greenwood Road, Valley Road, Hunter Drive, and Overhill Drive. The outage was found to be caused by a branch on the primary tapwire, and on the same day, the standby crew was called out for low wires on Great Avenue, Woodland Road, and the Waverly Green parking lot. The Electric Department is currently in the process of assessing and replacing aging utility poles that are found to be in deteriorating condition. The Water Department continues to replace outdated water meters with new meters with, that have automatic readers. If anyone is interested in having their water meter updated, please call the Madison Water Department. The Madison, sorry, out of the six hundred and twenty-one hydrants that were flushed and tested during the annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program, only one was found to be inoperable and has already been repaired by the department. The three emergency interconnections with NJ American Water were checked and tested for this year. These connections are for emergency use only and can flow water in both directions for the purpose of supplementing either the borough's or the private water company's water supply during an emergency event. And finally, the Water Department reminds us to please winterize automatic sprinklers before the cold weather sets in. Don't forget to shut off your outside faucets from inside your home, and please remove any hoses from those anti-cross faucets because if the water cannot drain away from the faucet, it will freeze anyway. That's all from the Utilities.
Thank you very much, and Health, Mr. Landrick.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, the Health Department conducted its first public flu clinic for the season where seventy-seven residents received their flu shot. Previously, the Health Department conducted clinics for the Madison Housing Authority, Madison Ambulance Corps, and Borough employees. Nurses were on hand at Bottom Hill Day where they gave flu shots to the members of the community. Residents who have not yet gotten their flu shot should do so in the coming weeks as flu season is upon us. Madison's next flu clinic will be three PM on Thursday, November fourth. Visit rosenet.org backslash flu to register for an appointment or visit your doctor or pharmacist. Madison reports twenty-three confirmed cases of COVID-19 since October first. The Delta variant remains a concern, but New Jersey cases have trended downward since mid-September. Last week, the FDA and CDC released updated recommendations for certain individuals to receive booster doses of COVID-19 vaccine. Timing and recommendations vary based on the vaccine you've received. Alongside this update, they also authorized mixed and matched both booster doses, meaning your booster can, can be any approved vaccine regardless of which one you receive for your primary dose. Full details are available from the CDC or on rosenet.org. Given the current COVID-19 activity level, additional mitigation efforts such as wearing masks and indoor settings, especially those that are crowded or where vaccination status of others is unknown, is highly recommended. Please visit rosenet.org on updates on New Jersey's COVID-19 vaccination program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move on to communications and petitions. Carrie, any communication petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And we're now move on to invitation for discussion. Now, today, we have an almost unique agenda in that we have no agenda discussions enter because of the short time in between meetings. There are no ordinance for hearing, any ordinances that were introduced at the last meeting will be, have a hearing at our next meeting. But we will be consistent with two separate invitations for discussion, which will be one right after the other. This first one is, as always, limited to, for tonight, is limited only to resolutions, but there are no agenda discussions. So these are resolutions you may comment on in this session here. And Resolution 274 is authorizing renewal of rental agreement for use of public safety compact for AAA for defensive driving instruction. Resolution 275 is awarding contract to purchase a 2022 Chevrolet Bolt EV electric vehicle amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. And this is availability of funds that's been coming out of vehicle maintenance account. The Resolution 276 authorizing membership in Union County Cooperative Pricing System. One of the many purchasing co-ops we are members of get the best possible pricing. Resolution 277 authorizing purchase of office supplies to Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council in excess of seventeen thousand dollars and five hundred. Resolution 278 is appointing Anthony Presizio to position of Public Safety Telecommunications Officer, also known as Dispatch. Resolution 279 is permitting restaurants, bars, and taverns to remain open until two AM on Thursday, November 25th. This is what we do annually on the weekends. The bars are permitted to be open until two AM. This is Thanksgiving Eve, we'll be consistent with the weekend. Resolution 280 is approving use of the community pool parking lot by the Thursday Morning Club for parking for a bus trip. Resolution 281 is authorizing membership in the Huntington County Educational Services Cooperative Pricing System. Excuse me. Resolution 282 is to affirm the Borough Madison Civil Rights Policy with respect to all officials, appointees, employees, prospective employees, volunteers, independent contractors, and members of the public that come in contact with municipal employees. This is a personnel policy that was initially introduced about five years ago, I believe, or further back, and this has been tweaked and updated by our joint insurance fund. The Resolution 283 is authorizing a Madison Food Truck Festival, including a limited beer garden for the PBA on November. Thank you very much. Well, those are the resolutions you may comment on. If you want to comment on any other topic, please wait shortly because we will be right to that section. So only the, right now, only the resolution. So when I call you up, as always, we do, please state your name, your address, and then the resolution you're commenting on, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes. We'll give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to stop, and you will be stopped at four. Claire Whitcomb, welcome.
Hello, thank you. Claire Whitcomb, 12 Fairwood Road. I'm commenting on the purchase of a Chevy Bolt electric vehicle, which I think is fabulous, and I just wondered what the town's intent for this is, and congratulations. I'm so pleased that Madison's a leader on the electric vehicle front. Thank you.
Thank you. I will have, Ray, could you answer that question on where this vehicle will be primarily used?
Yes, Mayor, it's going to be assigned to and shared between the Building Department and Engineering, and it's being paid for by Construction Department fees that we've collected, not tax dollars.
Very much. And Tom Harropputis.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Tom Harlandputis from 27 Palmer Road. I was also going to comment on the Resolution 275 about the electric vehicle, so that's a good move. I think we already have a couple of hybrids in the police department, two, at least one, but maybe two. So it's nice to see the borough moving in that direction, going around the four square miles of town. Should be pretty easy to maneuver with more electricity than using gas. Can I comment, Mayor, on anything from the committees, or should I wait until the next?
I'll tell you what I'll do is I will, if you're done with the resolutions, I will reset your timer, and we will, since no other hands are up, we will go on to our second part of our comment period where you can comment on any topic, and you're getting a new, a new time, and you don't have, and you don't have to reintroduce yourself either.
That's a treat, thank you, Mayor, it's my Halloween treat.
Yes.
So, one thing I wanted to comment on. You spoke, somebody spoke before about a few more burglaries that happened in town, and I know that the police are out and about doing the best they can to prevent that. This is something that I had brought up maybe a year ago or two years ago to council and to some of you offline, about investing in some of the entrance areas in the borough to license plate readers. I remember speaking to Chief Deishan about it before. I have not asked Chief Mishia his opinion on it, and I had spoken to Officer Longo, and it's not something that should be taken lightly because what license plate readers would do, if we did install them in the six or seven entrances to the borough, it would alert us when there's a car coming into the borough with a license plate that's suspect. Or let's say after hours, if we choose a time like midnight, we'd be benefiting to know that there's cars coming, and maybe three or four cars at a time, which is how some of these thieves commit their crimes, is they come in with a little posse, and they try to, you know, drive around where they don't see any activity from our police. and they try to, you know, drive around where they don't see any activity from our police. So just something to consider again, Mayor. I know you guys have a lot on the borough's plate as far as upgrades for the community. The other thing I wanted to ask about is I heard something about the a grant from, I guess it's from Morris County Open Space or Historic Preservation for the Masonic Lodge. And then I do remember reading somewhere that the Masonic Lodge might potentially be used for the seniors since they're going to be displaced from their current home on Cook. I had made a proposal in the past, and I thought this was a good idea. And some people also agree with me that the seniors might benefit from the borough supporting them to use part of the YMCA. The YMCA has twenty different activities for the seniors to participate in. And there's plenty of space in there where they could have their own area to have their meetings. I had been in the building now in Cook where the senior senate is very nice. I think it was underutilized because there wasn't enough people going there. There wasn't so many things for them to do. So if I'm, if I'm correct with my, what I heard about the Masonic Lodge for the seniors, I would like us to reconsider. And this is just me speaking. I had polled seniors before, but I haven't brought that up again since, since, since that time. It might have been a couple of years ago. It was probably when we were putting the elevator into the building. I wanted to also comment the new benches are a great addition to the borough and long overdue, but I do think we also need some new trash and recycling cans and maybe even more trash and recycling cans. We also need to survey which merchants are actually kind of letting their patrons eat their food and then they don't even have trash and recycling in their own businesses and people go outside and use the borough's trash and recycling cans.
And one minute.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that's something that you guys should definitely make an assessment in town and add to that. And then the last thing I wanted to ask about, I was trying to find the Madison Open Space and Recreation, Open Space and Historic Preservation budgets on the, on rosenet to see if there's any changes that have been made since we made all the budget presentations earlier in the year. You know, there was some projects on there that I thought maybe would be revisited in lieu of some of the new things that have come to light, such as the request for the community to give paddle and additional basketball courts to the town. And I know that there was different ways that you guys were considering to fund it, but it's something that I think should move forward. But I wanted to see what's still on the possible projects list. And I couldn't find the link to it, Mayor. So it might be on the rosenet, but I just couldn't maneuver properly. So maybe somebody could share that with me in the near future and with the community, too. That's an important, you know, important use of some tax funds.
Very good. You made it. Let me cover some of these things and we'll get other answers to you. The seniors, the approach and you've kind of touched on some of it is when you think about senior programming, what a broad programming area it is, there's probably no other group with such a wide age band, you know, you take the definition of seniors of sixty-five to whatever, you know, you're talking thirty-five years of different programming and there's no other age group that's that broad that so there's no single location that probably could really serve the best needs of seniors. You look at, think about Mahjong versus pickleball, ping pong versus bridge and various things. And so we'll be looking at multiple locations to make sure we have the best possible programming. And certainly partners such as the YMCA will be a part of this. And we've been working closely with the the nonprofit that runs the senior programs for the Chatham's in combined because there's more things we do together, the the greater the offerings can be. Thank you for noticing the new benches. And at the last week's DDC meeting, it was brought up that now that we have new benches, the trash and recycling cans really do stand out as being not the best. So we'll be looking at the options for replacing those. And it's one of my pet peeves that we don't have a one-to-one trash and recycling that sometimes you have to carry the recycling a little bit further. So that is on the docket. And we'll get the information on the current project list for open space. What it is, is not a budget per se, but more of a, a list of potential projects that are in in the pipeline, so to speak. And that does change based on opportunities and needs that may come up. So we'll get that information to you. And now we'll bring up Christine Hepburn.
Oh, hello, Mayor and Council. I'm not here to comment, but I really have a question.
Even though I introduced you, still need to state your name and address. Sorry, Christine.
I forgot. It's late for me. Christine Hepburn, in hard work formerly of sixty-nine Glen Wild Road. So like I said, I have, I just have a question. It could be me, but I really tried to find the answer on rosenet and couldn't. And it concerns the open space tax, Madison's, not the counties. When that was first passed way back, thank you, Ostry, for that. The level was, I believe, three cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. Two? Okay. And some years later, I think it went down to one. So I'm just curious about what the level is right now.
And any other questions? Because once I start answering, then we'll be.
Well, if it is not at its back, if it's not at its maximum, can it be raised in preparation for an anticipated purchase of the Drew Forest? As you can imagine, I, my sleep is disrupted nightly by thoughts of the Drew Forest being destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. So the, the tax, what was adjusted as it was approved by referendum at the two cents, it was reduced when there was a revale and basically property values had gone up substantially. So the, the change did not reduce the amount of money that was raised, but it's actually just kept it in line with the original intent. Could it be raised back up to the two cents? We can check with legal, but I think we could raise it back up, you know, the council, if they felt it was a need, could raise it up to, but not to exceed the two cents that was approved by referendum. So more, more to come on that in, in future times. Claire Whitcomb.
Hi, Claire Whitcomb, twelve Fairwood Road. That's interesting about the open space tax. Thank you for that information. I just wanted to tell you that, and I went to visit a high school friend. I went to her mother's memorial and I went out to Princeton. And she was having reminisces and a forest walk. And I knew she was trying to save a forest. So I was really keen on the forest walk. And it turns out that through sheer diligence that sort of rivals our own Sarah Webb, my friend has saved one hundred and fifty-three acres. A developer gave her ninety days to find public and private money, and she put together a package of eight point eight million dollars, which was his asking price for one hundred and fifty-three acres. And it's been saved and a number of environmental groups have joined in to applaud this thing. And I just found her so eloquent in speaking up for the trees and the importance of forests and the, the, the idea that trees are not isolated things in parks that stand amid grass. They have a whole community and ecosystem that goes with them. And it's possible to save a forest. That's what I wanted to let you know.
Thank you. And appreciate that. It's a great story. And it's, as we've been saying, our committee, as we've met in as a staff group around Drew Forest and other things is we're not completely in new territory. It might be new territory for Madison, but someone has also has, has been in positions such as this and we should learn from, from them. So appreciate that. And we will get some more information on that from you. Thank you, Claire. And I'll bring up Olivia Blondem.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Blonheim. And while I currently live in Tampa, Florida, I graduated from Drew University in twenty eighteen with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Biology and Spanish. Tonight, I would just like to speak to the ongoing efforts to save the Drew Forest and to share a little bit of my story. But first, I would like to thank you for your hard work and commitment to protecting this special place in the Madison community. When I was in high school, I knew that I wanted to pursue a career where I could use science to help me better understand the natural world. But I wasn't exactly sure what that path would look like for me. As a first generation college student, the college application process was incredibly daunting. But when I toured the Drew campus and learned about all of the different ways that I could get involved in research in the Drew Forest, I knew that it was the right place for me. During my four years at Drew, I spent countless hours in the forest conducting research and learning firsthand about the importance of conservation and restoration. I also had the opportunity to learn from incredible experts in the field like Dr. Tammy Winfelter and Dr. Sarah Webb, who were some of the first women role models and mentors I had in the sciences. One of the most transformative experiences was spending a summer with Dr. Winfelter studying the small mammal and deer populations on the Drew campus. That summer, I learned how to meticulously collect and analyze data, work together with my peers as a team, and how to be flexible and think through the challenges we face while working in the field. Even though my research interests would eventually take me from the forest to the ocean, the unique experiences I had in the Drew Forest set me apart from other students when I was applying to graduate school and for fellowships and internships through organizations like the National Science Foundation. Now, as a biological oceanography doctoral student at the University of South Florida College of Marine Science, I can see how crucial my research experiences in the Drew Forest were for preparing me for my career today. While my journey may be unique, every student I drew at some point will have an experience in the Drew Forest, whether it is through their introductory biology courses, volunteering planting native plant species, or just taking a walk through the forest as a way to relieve stress from classes and exams. The forest touches the life of every student at Drew. By investing in the protection of the Drew Forest, you are helping inspire and prepare the next generation to create the solutions we need to address the climate crisis, easily the most pressing issue of our time. As much as I love being a scientist, I know that scientists alone are not going to create the sustainable future we need. Whether a Drew student goes into business, the arts, education, or technology, by giving all students an opportunity to see their connection to nature and how their livelihoods depend on its protection, you are not just changing Madison and its surrounding communities, but every community around the world that a Drew student calls home. So thank you for continuing to help protect the special place that changed my life and continues to change the lives of all Drew students. So thank you.
Olivia, thank you very much for sharing your Drew story. It's a great one and reinforces what we're trying to do here in Madison. And thank you for representing Drew and the Madison community so well and your next steps in your life. Anyone else wishing to speak, please click a hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we move on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance schedule for first reading has a hearing date set for November eighth, twenty twenty-one. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call the ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety-five, article B of the Borough Code to establish standards for electric vehicle supply, service equipment, and make-ready parking spaces.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty-two dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
House of Discussion. This is a, to put us in, in line with state guidelines related to EV. If I remember this ordinance, we'll go to the planning board for review to consistency on the master plan and would come back here for the hearing. Which, and there may not be a meeting in between, so we'll have to double check on that. It could, the hearing may have to be pushed. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yeah.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Hey, ordinance forty-three dash twenty twenty-one.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for security and radio upgrades.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty-three dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
House of Discussion. This will, this is related to the, the overall major radio project. And this is doing some radio upgrades that will enable us to coordinate with the Board of Education and other things that are needed at this point. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yeah.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
All right, we now move on. Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditures is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution two seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one through Resolution two eighty-three dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, to all.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes, to all.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yeah.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
All right, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
Current fund is five million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. General capital fund is forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and four cents. Electric operating fund is seven hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Water operating fund is fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Trust fund is fifty thousand and eighty-eight dollars and seven cents for a total of six million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion?
The prepaid bills that I have in front of me for October twenty-fifth seem to have different figures. Jim, do you have access to the bill list?
He does. He's, he's just headed back right now.
All right, the, the figures I have, a total current fund is five million, four hundred and one thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. Electric operating fund is five hundred and twenty-four thousand, fifty dollars and thirty-five cents. Water operating fund, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. And general capital fund is eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a total voucher register of five million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. So I think the motion should be revised to reflect those figures.
That is CFO, you were correct, confirming that, too. So Ostry, can you revise?
Move to revise the numbers. And the CFO agrees with that. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, I apologize. Yeah, Mayor, I apologize. I was in the other office and running back here. And if you give me thirty seconds.
Okay, well, I'll call that a second. Yep.
Apologize, Mayor.
Am I hearing, am I hearing thunder?
So there, one second.
All those that are home right now.
I know. I'm glad you're chairing the meeting tonight.
Mayor, those numbers are correct.
Okay, so the revised number is correct. So Ostry.
To approve the revised numbers.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yeah.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
All right. All right. And now on to new business. I'd like to make the following appointment requiring confirmation is Diane Driscoll, Union Hill Road for Housing Authority Commissioner, five-year term through August tenth, twenty twenty-six.
I move Diane Driscoll to be a commissioner on the Madison Housing Authority for a five-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. And we're on to the next one. Bob?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
All in favor? See if I can get home and, if you can get home in time from Harley Todd. Everyone be well and be careful out there. Please respect the, the danger of flash floods. They can come up very quickly as we learned from Ida.
Yeah.
Be careful.